All right, it is now seven o'clock. I will call the meeting of the planning board for October 25th, 2018 to order. Like a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, whatever.
Good job, Bill.
Somebody has to keep track of me.
It was close.
It was. Okay. Public hearing, special permit for an accessory dwelling unit at 16 First Ave. William and Juliette Lewett.
Needs to be about four times that size.
Need binoculars to see that. Okay, all right.
Good evening, for the record Gregory Morris, Registered Engineer Morris Engineering, representing Bill Lewett.
Lewett.
16 First Ave. The Lewettts would like to construct an accessory dwelling at their single-family home located at 16 First Ave. Referring you to the plan, the property line is shown in black. First Ave is located at the bottom of the page. Existing residence is located right here. The proposal is to add, again, an accessory dwelling. The accessory dwelling would be an attached accessory dwelling. It's 750 square feet in size. It's one-story high, and it would be occupied by Mr. Lewettts' father-in-law. The outline of that accessory dwelling is in bold black line here. You will notice that the accessory dwelling complies with the front, the rear, and the side yard setbacks. Associated with the accessory dwelling would be a reconfiguration of parking spaces. We depicted on the plan two parking spaces within the existing driveway of the property, but we've also added two additional parking spaces associated with the single-family dwelling at the front. Because this home is a non-conforming dwelling, it was constructed in 1928. ZBA approval was required for the addition as a non-conforming residence. This was granted ZBA approval unanimously last week for construction of the addition. Again, the addition itself with the accessory dwelling complies with all aspects of the setbacks. I turn it over to you for any questions or comments.
Karen.
The accessory dwelling does, is sized at 750 square feet, so it technically meets the size requirement in the zoning bylaw. It does meet all the setback requirements, as Mr. Morris said, and it did receive the ZBA voted on last week to allow the special permit because it is an attached accessory dwelling for the pre-existing non-conforming house.
Thank you. All right, comments from the board? Rebecca?
Nope.
Ben?
Not at this time.
Steve?
I have a few questions.
I know you do.
On the special permit, is, has it been issued?
No, not yet. They vote, they voted last week.
Were there conditions? Were there statements? Was there anything associated with the special permit?
Not, I'm not aware of any. I wasn't at the meeting, but the accessory dwelling does, it was really because the existing dwelling is pre-existing non-conforming, and the accessory dwelling addition is, does conform to all the setbacks, et cetera.
Right. You don't know what else they said at this point?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Morris, can you enlighten us?
Sure. I presented this project to the zoning board. The condition was is that the addition here can't be occupied as an accessory dwelling without the special permit issued by the planning board.
Steve?
Yeah. So, I couldn't tell, and I'm hoping you have more information here, but I see the, sort of, the architectural rendering, I guess, of the accessory dwelling, but not how it relates to the existing structure. So do we have anything else that, sort of, can inform us of that?
I have a picture of the existing dwelling that I can pass around to the board to look at. And, you're right, we did submit architectural plans with this. The architectural plans document the access and degress points, the floor plan layouts, and elevationally wise, they provide an elevation showing the proposed addition to the house.
How does that relate to how the house is built and designed?
Sure. So this would be, if you're looking at the house from First Ave, this ridge line right here, this roof line represents the existing house.
That's First Ave is right in front of our house.
This is First Ave, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, this, this addition goes in front of the garage that you see in that picture.
Goes in front of the garage. So how do you get to the garage?
So the garage itself would just be used for storage at the back of the property. It's not used for particular access. The site plan here shows the long length of the addition. The garage is behind it. That photo is if you're standing in First Avenue looking onto the property.
So does the, I guess it's a little hard to tell, but does the addition, is it the same? I can't tell, is that, is that cedar shingle or is that clapboard siding?
Looks like clapboard.
So is, is that what the addition is? It's gonna all, it seems like it's sort of hanging off the edge. I'm just trying to figure out how it melds in.
Yeah, this, this bottom here depicts the, again, the existing roof line, the edge of the existing dwelling. It is a flat roof on the addition. This addition sticking out this way. It has a roof deck above a portion of it that you will see right there.
Did you consider something to match the design of this? In terms of, like, instead of a flat roof?
The goal with the flat roof was to be able to get, you know, the roof deck on it and additional space up there as a deck. They wanted one level living, so that's why it was presented as a one-story plan.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to address is Section 2E, right, which talks about the appearance, and that the dwelling's designed so the appearance of the building remains unchanged. And that feels like, I guess that feels like you're adding a completely, sort of, different design element to this house.
I have to...
I mean, was that considered at all?
Yes. What we're gonna be looking to do is put siding on the house, too.
That's not what he's talking about.
Oh, you're...
I'm just talking about, you've got, sort of, I don't know, New England cottage, kind of, look to it or something, with, you know, with roof lines, et cetera, and then you come to what is essentially, you know, a flat roof snow catcher, it looks like. And I don't know how that, sort of, blends in well with the rest of the house.
It actually looks like attaching a railroad car. That's what it looks like. I mean, it has no aesthetic look to it at all. It doesn't look like it belongs. You put on an appendage.
So what we were looking to do in the future is, we're gonna put barn, dormers on the, our bedroom area, which would open up right to that deck.
But that's missing the point.
I see what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
That is totally missing the point here.
The idea behind this was that, you know, this, this kind of connection would make the house look like it was, sort of, a single house, with the, with the accessory dwelling within the footprint of the house, but trying to get the appearance so that it, you know, the, sort of, the addition of the accessory dwelling didn't materially, sort of, modify the, the look and feel. So we're trying to keep that for the rest of the neighborhood, right?
Right, I see what you're saying.
So, that, I guess that was my primary question on this, is whether, you know, if it had a, if it just had a roof, right, a peaked roof of some kind, and the siding all tied in, the siding tying in together would be, would be good, because then at least it looks like it was, sort of, all built as a single house. But the flat roof...
It doesn't do it. It's, it's an appendage, and it looks like it doesn't belong. It's, it's just totally unrelated. And I agree with Steve. And before I continue, I'll open it up. Bill?
There are two things that bother me, and Steve did them both. One is that I'm concerned about what ZBA's written in their decision, what they're about to write in their decision. Because in the past, we've had the, thought they were helping us out by talking, sometimes parking, or sometimes various things, actually. And until I've actually seen their decision, I want to, I don't know exactly what's left for me to do to make it an accessory dwelling. The second was the fact I got two disjointed pieces that I'm trying to put together. And it, it doesn't follow, at least what I see as the intent of an accessory dwelling, instead of integrated into a neighborhood. I gotta integrate one half and then the other half.
And, you know...
Hang on one second.
I, I just wanna point out that, you know, we're not, definitely not opposed to accessory dwellings. We, you know, that's allowed by the bylaw and all of that, and, but part of the objective is to try to make it meld together, you know?
Patty?
Yeah, I, I agree that accessory dwellings are a good thing. I spent quite a bit of time down in that neighborhood today, looking at this house in particular, and I know why you want the roof deck. You want it to be able to see the ocean, your second, your second house back, right, from, from ocean side. Beautiful side yard, which is gonna be taken up by this L that just sits off. The whole neighborhood looks like that house. Six or seven houses right abutting them. I can't, and until we see what ZBA says about the parking or whatnot, I would agree with Mr. Pritchard and Mr. Limbacher that I, I'm a little hesitant to agree to this particular design for this accessory dwelling.
And I concur. I, again, it looks like an appendage. It looks like it doesn't belong. And as I have said to others that have come before us, I think you can do better. I really do.
Well, we know you can. Hmm? We know he can.
Yes, you can. And you might want to think about, from a design aspect, keeping your setbacks, et cetera, to moving the building, losing the garage, and figuring it out. You know, somebody, and a really, you know, whatever architect needs to, to deal with this. And at this point, I'll open it, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, one more second. Go ahead. The other thing is about the density issue down there. You have a pretty side yard there, and it's not a lot of property over there, and I think an L off of that house really aesthetically does not fit into that, into what we're looking for down there.
As I said, this is a public hearing. Is the public here to speak to 16 First Avenue? Anybody in the audience?
Hmm, okay. All right. I really think that you need to go back to the drawing board. I am not opposed in any way, shape, or form to an accessory dwelling. I think they are a good thing. But this needs to be dealt with.
The location for that is, one, we didn't want to lose any of our yard for our son, so that's why it's setback. But really, there's nowhere else to, I mean, you're, you're asking about the location, there's nowhere else to put the accessory dwelling on our, on our house.
I would say from a location point of view, you, you have to decide where that is, but the objective is to, as part of an accessory dwelling, is have it so that it appears to be all part of the same house, and, sort of, the same architectural look and feel. And I just don't think you've got that here. That, I, that's my bigger concern. I, I don't have any opinion, basically, as to where it should fit on the lot, and, you know, you have to make that decision, I think, but, but then trying to make it integrate into the existing structure is, I think, the big challenge. And it just, I have to say, it doesn't feel to me like you've accomplished that here. You know, even having, just having a roof line, right, on, on what looks like, as Anne so aptly put it, a trailer, might help change the look and feel, but I, I would leave that to, I don't know if you had an architect do this, or how this was done, but I have a real hard time seeing how it connects together, particularly since all we're looking at is just this, right?
Would you please identify yourself?
Please, Lewettts, 16 First Ave. Our intention also is to keep it one floor, so that we wouldn't be blocking some of the neighbors behind us who use the ocean. That was, we were keeping that in mind. We also want to match up a siding of our house, and maybe sort of, the, the, the siding of our house to this, 2750 square feet, it's gonna be like an L. It's gonna be a wide shape, you can't really see it that well in there. So, I think it will blend, honestly.
Because we're looking at putting siding on our house.
We did have an architect for all of that.
And that was the whole intent of this, was to change our house to meet the, the accessory dwelling.
Well, I, I agree with the siding, and I don't think, I don't think we meant to say that the siding doesn't matter. I think it actually matters a lot, particularly given what this looks like right now, is that at least tying it into the rest of the house, so it looks homogeneous, if you will, will help. From a, it's really the, I think it's really, sort of, the flat roof look that, that really makes it, sort of, stand out.
Sir?
The original...
Your name is?
Paul Cunnell. I'd be, I'd be the father-in-law of that, of the living. With my, my wife Susan. The original plans that were drawn up had a pitched roof on it, and the question was, would that take away the view that people behind the, behind the structure would have had of, of the ocean? So, we kind of agreed at that point that, well, maybe a flat structure would give them their view, because it wouldn't take away from their view. That's the reason why we wanted a flat structure, or a flat roof. So we still do have the plan for pitched roof, but that makes it any easier to meet with the board's rule.
I, I guess I don't have any sense for the view shed here, so I can't really respond to that. It would seem that a pitched roof, even of a fairly gentle slope, since you're going with a flat roof, it's obviously not a snow load problem, right? So even a pitched roof that's, you know, not a severe pitched roof, might be better than what you've got here. But it's hard to say without seeing it. And, and the problem that I have, just looking at this, is all I see is the accessory dwelling, not the integrated piece. If the architect's done something where he's integrated this all together, and we can look at it, maybe we'll have a different view, but I think the flat roof is, is a real challenge.
And it's also 35 feet long. And that's, that's, that's fairly good size, in terms of length. So, we are not against the accessory dwelling. Please understand that. We just need to have it fit, so that it looks deliberate. And that's the point of an accessory apartment, our dwelling, that it look deliberate, that it looks like it was always there, and not an afterthought.
I guess, can we, can we ask for input on the site plan aspect of this, the location of that? Looking at the site plan's not necessarily the aesthetics here of the architecture. We hear the architectural concerns. And then if we can get an answer on what the next couple of planning board dates are, it sounds like we'll be...
You'll be coming back.
Coming, coming back with some revisions, if we could get those dates.
Okay.
My concern is now with the footprint. I mean, you could probably go to anywhere you want to, as far as I'm concerned. I'm looking at this, how do I integrate it into this house and into the neighborhood?
Yeah, and the objective is to make it look like a single-family home, not like it's two dwellings, right? And, because that's one of our, one of the purposes in the, in the, right, in the zoning bylaws, is to try to preserve the single-family home look of neighborhoods as well. So, that, that's really the objective here. And maybe your architect can figure something out that, sort of, you know, makes all that happen and still keeps the neighbors behind you happy. I don't know. But I think we need to see something that looks at the integrated piece. And, and I would encourage you to look at something that has, sort of, sort of marries some of this, this roof. I mean, it doesn't probably have to be that kind of peak roof, but you've got some small, kind of, roof lines here, too, that could do it, or...
If you...
I'm, I'm sure there's, like, 10 ways to think about this thing, but...
If you took the garage roof, the pitch of the garage roof, and if you were able to, sort of, mirror that, and you could still have a cutout for your deck, there's a way to do this. I know you can do it. Okay? All right. Do we have the ability, do we have a motion to continue?
We, we can make a motion. The next hearings, as you asked, the next dates of the meetings are November 8th, November 29th, and December 13th.
So, yeah, we gotta make that decision now. So, let me, how available is your architect?
Oh, is it 12?
Yeah.
Available is your architect.
12?
12.
Yeah. I won't be here for the 12th, so... If you're trying to get, you need a super, you need a full...
We need a full board. So, what do you think, how long is it going to take you to put this together?
November 8th?
Wait, did you just say it was the 12th? Um, November 8th, I think we have, what's our agenda? It's pretty heavy.
It's, we could, we could squeak them in. We can shift some things around on the agenda, and we could, we could do it probably at, we could probably do it at 8 o'clock.
Okay, and push Anne Vinyl down?
Yeah.
Okay. 8 o'clock on the 8th.
Who's gonna write the decision, Greg? For the ZBA?
The ZBA is.
No, no, who?
Who? I'm not sure who they assigned it to. One of, one of the members, I'm not sure which one.
We should, we should check in with the ZBA and see if we'll have the decision by then, to, the written decision by then, too.
Who's the new member on ZBA? Do we know?
The new member is Brian Sullivan.
Really? That's interesting. Okay. All right, okay. I'll, okay, thank you. Do we have something for him to sign?
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the accessory dwelling special permit at 16 First Ave until November 8th at 8:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And family.
Yeah, thank you for coming today.
I know we can work this out.
Ideally, what we'd see is, we'd see variation of the addition matched up to the, to the existing building. You'd see that. Is that trouble putting all the pieces together?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Karen, do you want to keep this picture?
So we've got five minutes before another public hearing.
No, this is... You're along for the full ride.
Is that? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Feels like an extension of 50 Country Way.
It should have, all of the plans should have, like, a, what's called a zoning table?
Okay.
I'm not sure. There should be one.
Right here, right here.
So it should tell you in that...
This is three stories?
What the current is, and then what the proposed is, and then what the requirement is.
No?
Because they're in the building business, they're able to get pretty tight.
Yeah, yeah. Is this August?
March 8th.
Well, I mean, I'm just, oh, the stamp is August 8th.
Where's that?
Yes.
I read them, but... All right, it is almost 7:30, so, and we have a scheduled public hearing for a special permit, mixed-use special permit in the Village Business Overlay District, 6 McDonald Terrace. Okay, one presentation, please.
And for the record, Gregory Morris, Registered Engineer Morris Engineering, representing RJD Development, Bob Berwick, who's the applicant and owner of the property, with us, as well as the architectural designer, Kelly Ennis. This is a special permit for a mixed-use building in the Green Bush Village Overlay, 6 McDonald Terrace. Referring you to the plan, looking at the top left, we have a viewport that depicts the existing conditions at the site. McDonald Terrace is located here at the bottom of the viewport. The property line is in black. There's an existing old property, an existing single-family residence, I've shaded in brown. The property is located in the Jembo Business District... The property is located in the Jembo Business District, is also located in the Village Business Overlay District. The frontage itself is on McDonald Terrace. McDonald Terrace being a private way, but a paved way that has utilities within it, including water, sewer, you know, electrical services available. There's a fire hybrid directly across the street that we've identified on the plan, directly across from the frontage of the property. The topography on this lot generally slopes in a southerly direction. The high point being the northern lot line is at approximately elevation twenty-two, and it slopes over to the southern lot line, where at approximately elevation eighteen. So, there's about four feet of grade difference from one side to the other. The proposed project is what's depicted on the viewport here at the top right of the plan page. What we would be proposing to do is to raise the existing dwelling and construct the new mixed-use building. The building is generally ninety feet to the right, one end to the other, twenty-eight feet deep, has a porch across the front of it. An interior of this building would be five residential units and one commercial space. Those units have a breakdown of, there's one, one-bedroom unit, there are four, two-bedroom units, and then the office space on the first floor, three hundred and fourteen square feet. Around the back of the building would be a proposed parking lot. We'd be coming in with a twenty-foot-wide driveway along the northern property line to the back of the property. There were ten parking spaces depicted here. Zoning requirements for this building, with this use require eight point one parking spaces. We're providing ten. We'd cite a dumpster at the rear of the property, enclosed dumpster, the back right corner of the parking lot. Access into each of the units, each unit would have a back entranceway, as depicted on the plan. There would also be a walkway to the front of the building, where there'd be entrances along the front of the building as well to each of the units. This building would be connected to the public water supply, it would be connected to public sewer service. You'll see email correspondence from both the water department and sewer department stating the availability of both of those for this project. We've proposed landscaping associated with this project. Today, we submitted a revised landscaping plan prepared by Kennedy's Country Gardens as the result of some of the comments at the Design Review Board. The landscaping at the site generally consists of creating a evergreen screen with arborvitae along the back lot lines and around the dumpster location, and then along the southern boundary. Kennedy's has specified a number of shrubs, as well as some ten-to-twelve-foot magnolia trees along that southern boundary line as well. Drainage associated with this project, we submitted a drainage report documenting the pre-versus-post development rates and volumes would be met, pre-development versus post. That's accomplished by taking the roof area from the building, as well as the parking lot, and directing it into a subsurface recharge system. What we're proposing is, we're proposing a tree box filter. All of the drainage in the back grades toward the tree box filter, which provides TSS removal and sediment a chance to settle out. And then we have, again, under the parking lot, infiltration chambers. We conducted three soil tests in the backyard. It's extremely gravelly, well-drained soil. There were no groundwater indicators at the property. It's very well-drained. I'm going to turn it over to Kelly, Kelly, excuse me, to run through the architectural layouts.
Hello, Kelly, again, Kelly Ennis. I'm here to provide the final for the project. So, just to run through a little bit with the elevations, um, the idea was to really try to break up the facade of the building and make it not feel like, you know, six units, like, right in a row, and make it feel a little bit more residential. Create, I created a, um, a wraparound hip roof porch to be able to break up the facade as well, and create entries for each of the units. We met with the Design Review Board last week, and they made some suggestions, which I've already taken into account. We had a much smaller trim on the, um, on the gable end of the roof. They wanted to, to really beef this up and create these returns to really give it a little bit more of a stately look. And I also created a water table on the bottom. We just really wanted to break up some of that, you know, large mass of, of the siding. They also suggested that we added a chimney in order to break up some of the roof line. We're really tight on the lot itself, so, um, I've broken up the roof line, but it's really, we're really only stepping back a foot per sort of mass that we have here. And so, the roof line can't be actually that differing in terms of heights, so that's why we wanted to try to break that up with the, um, with the chimney there. And they also had suggested, um, the roof, the porch before had no railing, so we put some railing in to, to, again, break up some of the, of the massing. I've also passed around, we have an initial lighting plan that we're proposing. I can hold this up if you wanted to. It's a, it's a contract for you. The general, the general idea with the lighting is that, um, it's going to be low lighting. Uh, we're going to have, um, pretty much at each entry, like, an onion, an onion light type of light with incandescent lighting, um, and anything, so, along the back and along the front, at where the openings are will be these sort of low lights. And then anything up higher, where there's, there's back balconies on all the units that are, that are actually enclosed, you'll see in the plans that the, the walls actually come out, so you can't, they're not open to their neighbors. And in those spaces, we're going to do, and everything up there will be downlighting, like a barn light, which you'll see in the specs that I included. And the parking lot light, we're also going to be doing the down barn lights that, that go with some of the character of the neighborhood, what people have been doing. So, again, those are just initial specs of lighting that, you know, may tweak a little bit, but that's sort of the idea there.
All set?
Oh, sorry, one other thing with color, too. We had initially chosen with the planning, uh, sorry, with the Design Review Board, we initially had planned to try for like a pretty dark, bold color, like a, um, like a navy or a dark, dark gray. They suggested we did something a little bit more subdued and lighter, um, so, we're proposing, um, doing a hardy, it's a hardy, we're not going to go with the shingles, this is just for color purposes. The siding, this is called cobblestone, um, with white trim and white windows, so this is the actual sample, too.
But it's a, it's a hardy board?
Yes.
Like a clapper?
A clapper, yeah.
Thank you. Karen?
As the applicant has said, they did meet with the Design Review Committee, and you have, uh, their recommendations in your package, and we had the, uh, we had the peer review, engineer review, the, um, materials, too. So, um, they're, they're working their way to getting, uh, the drainage and everything well-designed. They did get a comment from the fire department, and I guess the big, um, the board should determine whether the level of detail on the architectural plans is satisfactory, um, for your, for your needs.
Thank you. I'll start with Steve.
Well, one thing I note that the, the Design Review Committee asked for, that maybe we haven't, I haven't seen yet, was a, a scale drawing of the elevation of the building showing the neighbor, neighboring single-story homes as well. Sort of something that's a broader perspective than just looking down at the lot, if you will, or looking at the facade of the building. Is that something you've done already? Or you addressed?
We, we haven't produced a 3D model of this building at all. I think that the heights of the building are noted on Kelly's plan, but we haven't produced any renderings or models. In looking at the neighborhood, this is one of what, you're probably going to see several projects popping up in this neighborhood, and we feel that with this building, this is what the bylaw is requesting as far as size-wise and height-wise, it is in compliance. It will be larger than some of the single-family residences in the neighborhood. We feel that this is a project that is forthcoming of other projects in the neighborhood as well.
So, um, I'm just looking at the report of our Design Review Committee, and they indicate that you agreed to do this and provide it as like a silhouette comparison and massing. So, I...
Actually, um, we questioned that request.
Okay, well, all I can go by is what they wrote to us, so...
Because, um, we felt in, in every, um, aspect, we were complying with the spirit of what, uh, the overlay zoning, um, um, requirement or request is, in terms of what the town really was designing, requesting be done in that area. And so, the question is, what purpose, um, really, um, does that accomplish if, in fact, we have complied with what specifically is stated in, in the zoning regs for that, for that area? True, it, it will be larger than, than adjacent buildings, but, um, as Greg mentioned, um, we are quite certain that there'll be others coming forward, um, in the near future that are going to propose similar styles, similar, uh, massing of, of structure sizes.
At this point, we're, we don't have any others, just yours.
Yeah.
Um, so, are you indicating that you did not agree to do this?
Actually...
Or did you have second thoughts?
No, we, we questioned it.
According to this, if I may interrupt, the DRC also asked the applicant to provide a scale drawing of the elevation of the proposed building, also showing the neighboring single-story home. The applicant agreed to do this, as long as it does not need to be detailed, but can show silhouette comparisons of the massing. And the DRC recommended that we, Planning Board, ask for that. So, you did, according to their letter to us, you agreed to do this. We're not asking for a, you know, 3D model. All we want to see is, okay, this is thirty-five feet, and this is twenty-five feet, you know, how do these compare?
We can do that.
Is that what you were looking for, Steve?
Well, that's what...
That's what they wanted.
That's what supposedly you agreed to do, so, um, we would like to see that.
Right. I mean, it certainly is big. There's no question about that. All right, are you all set for a moment?
Yeah, go ahead. I, I might have other questions, but keep going.
Rebecca?
Not right this moment.
Ben?
Uh, could you talk to me a little bit about the mixed-use aspect of this building? I know you said there's going to be a, a small office, but just kind of what, how is this intended to be used as a mixed-use building?
Sure. So, as, as you look at the front of the building here, the, um, the office space is at the left side, it's the first floor of the left unit here. Each of these blocks in the building represents one of the two-bedroom units, the four of them, one, two, three, four. The left end of the building, the first floor, is an office space with access to the front, out to the street, it also has access from the back out to the parking lot. Above that office is a one-bedroom apartment above that. The office space is all the way at the far-left end of the building.
And do you, so you envision probably like professional office, or, is there going to be a lot of people coming and going? I, I guess I'm trying to figure out what type of business is going to be operating here.
Sure. It's, it's not a large office space, it's just over three hundred square feet, I think. Bob's intention is to run his, his real estate development business out of there. I see it being a small professional office, not generating a large traffic volume.
I guess my other question right now is, um, regarding affordable units. Well, first, I guess, are these, are these units intended, residential units intended to be rentals, or are they to be purchased by owner?
The plan is for them to be condominiums.
Okay. And are, is there going to be any affordable units included, or...
No.
So, they'll just be at market rate?
Market rate, correct.
Bill?
Just, why do you put the office on the left instead of the right?
Because I'm left-handed. Why do...
I just wondered, because it seemed to me that now I've got to go the whole length of the building, get to the office where before I just get to the front of the other end.
The, the adjacent, um, way it's set up, it's adjacent to the, the, um, the river shed and the ice house, and it seemed more desirable to keep the, the office space along that property line and keep the residential on, towards the residential side.
You know, I'm going to find a call, I just...
Yeah.
Are you all set?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Patty?
Well, this is a big project for down there, and you're, you're the first, so you could be a trendsetter, so, do the very best, and, you know, set some standards for people coming in after you. That would be nice to see.
Uh, this is a public hearing, and I will open it up for comment from the public. Just identify yourself, name an address, please. Any comments from the public? Sir?
Which property?
Eighteen Fourth Place on the Illinois Road, that property there. It seems like it's conforming to the plans that I sat down with, um, Brad Washburn on, gone through these, and, um, how, how high is the project? I didn't see the, the actual height. Can we go up?
Thirty-five?
Is that to the...
Is the peak, to the peak.
Is the peak, thirty-five? And that's allowed?
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I don't have any issue with that. I just didn't know the number. Um, but, you know, it seems to conform with what's going on in the area, and the plans that have gone forward, so, I don't have any issue with that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Karen Consilvia, Twenty-two Fourth Place. Is there going to be access to that parking lot from the drift car?
No.
Here?
No.
We already have a problem with traffic on that street, in parking, the people parking on McDonald, on the side there.
To access the river shed?
Uh, I don't know. Sometimes I do see people crossing that fence there, in the, at night, probably hear them talking outside on the street, but this is just, we have pictures, I don't know if you can see from here, of all these people that, um, these are people parked on McDonald. This is on McDonald, and...
They have...
During the day or evening?
This is during the day, yeah, and then, I mean, I see people walking back at night, I don't know, I don't always know where they're going. I'm just concerned about the increased traffic. Well, last time, this was a problem, we told Mr. Put rocks on our lawn, which we did. People hit them, stop trying to, um...
Where, where are these people going, where they're...
I, I don't know. I think they're, I think they work for the landscaping company that's on Fourth Place.
Then it's up to the landscaping company to have his workers off the street. I would think that would be in his best interest.
Yeah, I mean, there are other cars that go back to our lawn.
Okay. Um, have you been to traffic rules and regulations about your setup, what you're doing in terms of off-street, on-street parking?
We have not been to them. All of our parking is off-street.
All right, um, Karen, what would you recommend in terms of people parking on this street? There aren't any, no parking signs on Fourth Place that I know of.
Right, as Greg just said, all the proposed parking for this project is, uh, is...
Right, and we have no control over what people do on Fourth Place, actually. You could complain to either traffic rules, or the, um, community officer through the police department, or call Northern Oak and ask them kindly to have their people. Okay? Okay? All right, anyone else? Yes?
I'm Kathy Chase on, 10 Fourth Place. Been there a long time. Greg, Karen, Jim, so forth. So, parking is a problem on Fourth Place. Bring the pizza, for instance, on the parking lot. I own three houses, I own six, ten, and fourteen on Fourth Place, so I'm concerned, but I wish Bob well, as ever, but the neighborhood is changing and I expect to be doing something with my properties in the very near future. So, I'm just an interested neighbor, listening, what it pays, so forth. But whatever Mr. Borowitz does, it's going to affect us as well, as whatever I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Greg?
Part of a public comment, we received an email and I'll turn this in for the record from a attorney, John Sullivan, who's been up there directly across the street. It says, "Dear Bob, although I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting, we may represent to the board that you have my support for this project."
Thank you. All right.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
Um, this has nothing to do with. This has nothing really to do with this, but as far as Mr. Sullivan, who was just brought up, we had an issue with some people working on his property years ago, where somebody on his property actually threw beer bottles above my head as I was walking down the path. We contacted the police about this, as well as sent him registered letters and never got anything back from anyone. I have all the registered letter receipts, so. Yeah, you say contacted police, but it seems like.
I'm talking in terms of parking. And the police department, over the years, has changed.
Yeah.
And I think it, I hope, and I do believe it has changed for the better.
Because I, I'm sorry, I just worry that with someone always knows someone, it seems that, I don't know, people get off easy because we were never contacted about anything.
How long ago was this?
This was 2011.
Things have changed. A lot. I would suggest that you contact the outreach person at the police department and explain it to them. All right? And see what happens, because I think that they are really concerned about the community and what's going on in the community, and even though this was a number of years ago, it still is upsetting to you. So, in that regard, you can have a little agenda and go in and talk to them or have them come to you, and they will hopefully deal with it. Okay?
It's just, I don't know, I know, I know that he agrees with everything, I feel like that, I just worry about, I'm sorry.
It'll be okay. All right. Anything else?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a number of questions.
Okay.
Really about infrastructure. How are these buildings heated and/or air-conditioned? Are they?
Yeah, they're HVAC systems.
And so, where are the condenser units?
They're on. They happen on the plan, don't they?
They're going to be on the parking lot side, behind each of the units.
And is there going to be any noise, barrier to them?
There are going to be landscape shrubs around each unit.
But we're going to have, we're going to have at least six condenser units all aggregated on that side?
Yes.
And how close are you to the nearest resident?
The nearest residence, it'd be the Chaseon property, which is approximately 100 feet away from where the nearest condenser would be. It's across the parking lot through the evergreen barrier.
And these are residential units, residential systems, so they're not like the big commercial units?
Yeah, you're going from, I don't even know if you have one there now, so it could be nine to six, all in the same place, all running at the same time. So, I'm just asking if you've sort of thought about sort of noise mitigation here?
The residential units, I don't think it's going to be a noise unit. We have new driveway in the background as ambient traffic driving by as well. It's not a, it wasn't a concern that we looked into, we can certainly look into it for you, but it didn't, didn't seem appropriate to look into at this point.
I would say that's one you should look into. The, so water and sewer are coming off of town systems?
McDonald Terrace, yes.
Yeah. And has the water department and the sewer department provided any input on that?
Yes, you have emails to your department indicating that there's capacity available for this.
Capacity in the pipe or capacity in the system? Both?
Both.
That's what they said?
Yes.
Okay. Lighting, you talked about incandescent lights. I would strongly encourage you to use LED lights.
They're incandescent but have an LED.
Okay. And I think you just need to make sure that the, that they are downlights, right? So that we're not providing any other sort of irritant, particularly up, particularly up on the porches, I guess, because those are going to be up high, right?
Those are going to be downlight, yeah.
Yeah, okay. The head-in parking, I assume that's what that is there? Do the headlights of those shine directly into any resident?
No, so as you pull into this driveway, straight ahead is the back of the garage on the Chaseon property.
Okay.
You pull into this parking lot and any of these spaces here are aimed at the Chaseon property, but there is no residence at that location, and then we're providing an evergreen screen along that entire block as well.
And now, those are, what are those evergreens? Are they big?
I believe there are, providing.
Okay. Tell me how you're dealing with the trash?
Sure. We have an enclosed dumpster. The dumpster is a 10 by 10 pad, it's in a fenced-in enclosure, located right here. So, each of the units would be able to go out and take trash.
Okay. And there's not going to be, from the mixed-use stuff, it's really, it's sort of mixed-use, really light?
Yes.
Just?
Light office.
It's an office with one person in it or something?
Four left-handed people. Four left-handed people.
Oh, well, I thought one of the things you wanted to move it to the right side, provided.
I tried that.
It didn't work.
And the fire department, I understand, looked at this. I'm just looking at, at the orientation, how you get in there. Have you, have you looked at people getting in and out of there? It looks really tight.
Fire department, I spent some time with the fire department, Deputy Elliott, and he was totally satisfied, we're going to have a 20-foot access area to the rear parking, and the street is in fact, at a minimum, 23 feet wide in front of the building, and he said that was, that was adequate for a hammerhead turnaround. He had, he had no issue with that. They could drive the length of McDonald Terrace right up to the.
To the end of the cul-de-sac.
To the end of the cul-de-sac and access the building easily from three sides and.
So, he's not worried about getting behind it then?
Not at all. He could, he said they even have access actually from the drive area of the Ice House river shed area where the pizza shop is, that's a, that's a driveway that would afford them access to the back as well. So, he had no.
Which is on this side over here?
The left side.
Left side, okay.
I would add, this is a fully sprinklered building as well.
And we sent you the comments from the fire department.
Yeah, I had, I have a pile of stuff. It's easier. I'm sorry if we're slowing people down here, I just try to make sure I understand it all. And then, just cars getting in and out of there. How much room is there from the back of the, sort of the?
So, the parking spaces are 18-foot parking spaces, and then behind the parking space is a 24-foot wide aisle, which is a standard 90-degree aisle, similar to what you would have, say, down in Cole Parkway in a commercial parking lot. From the back edge of that parking lot to the building, there is a curb there, and then from that curb to the building is another six to seven feet.
But that's a curb though, right?
That there is a.
That's a curb, yeah.
Pre-cast curb.
Okay. And is there handicap accessibility here?
No, there's no requirement for handicap accessibility on this site.
Really?
Correct. With private residential condos, it's not required for the individual units, and with commercial businesses, it's required if you have a parking space of 15 or more spaces. We don't exceed the thresholds with that.
Do you need handicap accessibility to the office?
To, to the office, you do getting in and out of the office. You don't need to provide a space for it, though.
Is that provided?
Coming in at grade.
Yeah, it's coming in at grade, yeah.
Yep. It's coming in a grade and there's curb cuts and stuff for access?
There, there is. There's a, a paver walkway all the way around the side of the building to the accessways.
Okay, and then I understood that there was, and maybe this just got submitted, but is there a landscape plan?
Right here, dear.
Just was submitted today.
Yeah.
No, this was submitted today?
Yes.
I didn't look at it today then. I'll have to reserve my.
They will be coming back.
They will be, yeah.
They will be coming back to, you know, look at your issues in terms of noise. We have, we know that there is capacity for the water and for the sewer. You want the elevations, just some type of a schematic that.
Yeah, we want to see the neighborhood with it.
With it. And also too, I think this is triggered, you will be going before conservation at some point?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else that we need to have them?
About open space?
Sure. Yeah, open space is required as part of the project. The minimum required open space is 20% of your lot area, which is 2,500 square feet. The open space that we've provided, I've shaded even green, that represents 4,740, we're providing 38% of open space.
The lots, you said the lots 2,500 square feet?
The lot itself is a little over 12,000 square feet.
12,000, okay. So, you needed 2,500 square feet for 20%, okay?
All right.
Are you all set?
Yeah.
We're coming back and I'm sure we'll have more questions.
I might have more questions too.
You got a few questions?
All right. Yes?
Greg, talk to me.
I am concerned about all those air conditioners heading just towards my property, so it's, I know you talked about.
That's on the list.
Is that on the list?
That is on the list.
Quick, thanks.
Noise, yes.
I see him writing it down over there.
So, do you want them to show them on the plan as well too?
Yes.
Yes.
Please. Bill?
Talk to me about the drainage in the site again.
Sure. This drainage system is essentially the same drainage system that we've designed at 50 Country Way and the 6 Old Country Way, the rural side. What we've proposed at those locations, as well as this one, is what's called a tree box filter. A tree box filter is a, a tree that gets planted actually inside of a concrete box filter. So, all the stormwater from the parking lot is directed to this box filter. Roots in the tree will uptake some of the water, but the water is also filtered through media inside of the concrete box.
Special soil?
Special soil, yeah. So, once it goes through that, it's directed into subsurface leaching chambers under the parking lot. These here are hull tech chambers, there's 28 of them, and then it would recharge simply into the ground. This is all extremely gravelly soil, it was less than two minutes an inch park desks, no groundwater reserve.
So, it comes down and then it filters back up where the parking lot is?
No, the filter is in the parking lot itself, so the whole parking lot is pitched to drain to the, to the southern end, that's where the tree box filter is. The tree box filter then pipes it into the recharge system, which is right here.
Now, what I read about it, they talk about they've got a high level of TSS removal?
Yes, so.
How do you figure it out?
Sure, so Merrill's report, he says that we didn't include the TSS removal worksheets. I'll certainly provide a copy, it's going to be the same copy that we used at those other projects, which documents that this type of system achieves 90% TSS removal.
And what, what yearly or annual maintenance is it requiring?
There'd be, there'd be annual maintenance for parking lot sweeping, there'd be clean out of the sediment, out of the tree box filter, any accumulated sediments that would be there, and then replacement of the tree, if the tree was in the car.
What do you do with your snow?
Sure. I think there's adequate area just outside of the parking lot to stockpile the snow. As I said before, there's between seven feet and six feet between the parking lot and the building. You also have landscaping around the entire parking lot that you can put snow on, you know, in the event that there was too much snow, you'd have to remove from the site.
Because it looks to me like your lives, you're not going to take it off the site, you're going to have to keep it on site. What about pedestrian traffic? You mentioned you get to walk around the building?
Yeah, the pedestrian traffic, what we've proposed for that is we've proposed out to McDonald Terrace. McDonald Terrace doesn't have a sidewalk on it, but we've proposed from the porch at the front of the building out to McDonald Terrace, a pathway. We've also proposed off of the end of the porch, a walkway up to the side driveway, and then off the other end of the porch, a walkway around the building to the back of the parking lot. So, this is an open porch on the front of the building with access into the units, so you could, you could walk around to the front of each of the units from out back.
That's on site. And do you anticipate people going down, walking through the property to get to the pizza place?
I don't know that there's a lot of residential traffic coming down Ford Place and McDonald Terrace right now to cut through this property.
Were you asking about the people who live there, Bill?
Well, I think the people that live there, but you've also got the people that park in Ford Place.
But we don't know that they're going to the pizza place.
I don't know where they're going.
They could go to work. Yeah, they could be at the landscape place.
I'm sure if you live there, you're taking the shortcut.
There's also, right at the, right at the end of Ford Place, right next to where the Green Bush Post Office is, there's also that pathway that exists from Dunkin' Donuts over to the, you know, the Charlie Reynolds Store area, and then that's being extended even further through the 50 Country Way project as well.
And also. Also too, you can walk down the end of Ford, just before Riva's Pizza, and even though there's a dumpster there, you can walk through there as well. So, there is access.
There is.
For walking all over the place.
Yeah.
As opposed to cutting through people's yards. All right, yes, excuse me, Steve, yes?
I didn't quite see, but Greg pointed out where the dumpster is for the condos, and kind of in relation to Ford Place.
Yeah, so, here's, here's the garage at 18 Fourth Place, it's directly behind the garage, right here is the dumpster. Here's, here's the garage on your property, right behind the garage.
Is it going to be fenced at all or just screening with the abridgies? Is it going to be fenced or just screening with the abridgies?
We call it out as a fenced enclosure.
Did you look at other locations?
This, with this driveway layout, this seemed like a very good location as far as a trash truck being able to come in and access it straight. Are there other locations you probably could cite in? Are there other locations? You probably could cite it in other locations. That seemed like a fairly adequate one for us.
And that's right next to my garage right now, am I right?
Correct, yes.
And I just, I'm sorry, I was just wondering, is a trash truck only be able to make that turn to get into that driveway?
You'd be surprised what trash trucks can do.
Well, a water truck made a wrong turn and almost drove into us last week, so I don't worry about trucks turning down there. They have, they have difficulties turning. I watch the male trucks.
How often is the tra, is the trash emptied?
Once a week typically.
Is that what you're going to commit to?
Yeah, we commit to that.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have one other question. We didn't really talk about it, but what about trees? Are there existing trees that are gonna be saved here?
The majority of the site right now, as it's developed, is lawn around the house, but there are trees. Those trees are identified here on the existing conditions plan. All of those trees would be cut for the development, and then we would be replacing the landscape.
So you're, you gotta clear cut the, the whole lot in order to do this?
Correct. The majority of the lot, again, is already cleared and maintained as lawn.
All right.
Can I ask you a question?
Couple of things.
Yes.
What type of trees are gonna be in the tree box filters? Are, are those shown on the plan?
We have the plan there, right?
Right. This is the tree box, I think.
Looks like a tiny tree. Looks like a sapling.
We didn't, we didn't specify the specific tree. It'll be, it's a deciduous tree, I know that. I can get the specific type.
Please.
Is there a maximum size that a tree could be in a tree filter box?
About eight inches.
Eight inch diameter?
Then you have to take it out and put in a new one?
Replace it.
Okay, which leads to my question here. Is there a condo association? In other words, who's in charge of all of this?
Condo association.
Okay. And you'll, they'll have a condo fee, and there'll be a board, and you'll have...
So we'll need to see about the...
Rules, regs, and all the rest of it. And the other thing...
Just, just a note, we'll need to see those condo blocks.
Yes. And also too, a time for trash. In other words, we don't want the trash truck there in a residential neighborhood at six o'clock in the morning, disturbing the neighbors, and the people that live in the condominiums. So, all right.
Signage?
No signage.
No sign out front that says?
Well, if it's down at the other end.
If you lived here, you'd be home now.
Right, okay.
Only why, to take the train?
Train, that way. Okay, is there anyone else? Rebecca?
Nope.
Ben? Steve, you're all set.
All set for now.
Okay, Patty's set.
Anybody else? Yes?
I would see an issue with the dumpster at the end, next to the residences versus on the other side of the parking lot, supposed to the parking, the other pocket here. I don't think I want a dumpster right next to me.
Okay. Take that under advisement, please.
The fire department said they could access from the side where the businesses are, the ice place, whatever. But, so cars can't come from those businesses into that lot, or can?
No, no, impossible.
It's a, it's a little bit of a hill up there, right?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
No, I will, I'm not, yeah, where I'm trying to...
Okay. All set? All right. Patty, please?
I move to accept the applicant's request to continuance the public hearing for the mixed use special permit in the Village Business Overlay District at Six McDonald Terrace until November twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, at seven P.M.
Is there a second? All, uh, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's an interesting article on the tree boxes. It's in North City of Rhode Island, the Walt...
There you go, we can take, oh, sorry, here.
She should have whatever you've submitted here, including if you were submitting materials like that. She should have something, so we know that this is what was presented.
In City of Rhode Island, should we take a field trip?
A common, yeah.
Excuse me, Kelly, do you want this too?
No, you can have this.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we need to move along so that we can get home before, whenever.
Uh, Greg, you're not Forty-four Captain Pierce, are you?
What's that, a Form A's?
Yeah, okay.
You hear again? Excuse me, could we please move it on out?
Could you move your conversation outside, please?
Out. Oh, no, no, thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna need a bailiff.
I'm gonna need a whistle.
Rebecca's on the end, so you're the bailiff.
Okay. Lady in red. We have a Form A for Forty-four Captain Pierce Road. Mr. Morris, you're on yet again.
For the record, Gregory Morris, Register of Chief Morse Engineering, representing Urban and Mary Jane Versoy for a Form A development of their property at Forty-four Captain Pierce Road. Captain Pierce Road is at the bottom of the page here. Captain Pierce Road is a public street accepted by the town of Cituit. Property was developed with the existing home here, number forty-four. It also has a barn that was constructed at the property. What we're proposing to do is to divide the property into three lots. This is in the R-two zoning district. Lot one being a lot with fifty feet of frontage on Captain Pierce Road, and being at least twice the lot area required by zoning. Lot one being forty-two thousand square feet, twenty-five square feet in size. Lot two is a conforming lot with a minimum frontage of a hundred and thirty-one point six five feet and twenty thousand eighty-three square feet of area. Lot three being a conforming lot with frontage of two hundred and sixty-four feet and a lot area of twenty thousand one hundred and eighteen square feet. The lot lines as depicted show that the existing building and the existing barn are in compliance with the setbacks to the proposed lots. We've proposed concrete boundary markers to be installed at all of the new lot lines as required by the regulations.
Have you obtained from the ZBA your fifty-foot frontage?
No. We have applied to the ZBA for the fifty-foot frontage, and we've noted on this plan that lot one is not a buildable lot. We've noted that lot one can only be built upon after issuance of a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. It's the same note that was placed on the previous plans endorsed against.
All right, thank you. Karen?
Mr. Morris just said that that, the same note has been placed. They also have a note that indicates that the wetlands aren't accepted yet by the Conservation Commission, but they're, that, and they will have to be accepted by the Conservation Commission.
But that really has no bearing on a Form A?
It has no real bearing on a Form A, except that it's part of your regulations that they should be, but as Ms., the note, there's a note on the plan.
Fine, thank you. Discussion from the board. Don't everyone speak at once? Okay, Rebecca? No, no questions on this one. Ben? Steve? Bill?
All set.
Okay, Patty?
Okay.
You have a motion?
I do. I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land in the town of Citrit, Mass., Forty-four Captain Pierce Road, prepared by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated for applicant Bethany Versoy, power of attorney, and owners Erby R. Versoy and Mary J. Bubay Versoy, dated ten seventeen eighteen. As the division of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows every lot on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required under the Citrit zoning bylaw on the public way of Captain Pierce Road.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To vote. Mr. Morris, are you here for Forty-four Ocean? Wasn't this just in here?
Yes.
All right, what have you done?
Okay. Ocean Ave, that's at the bottom of the page here. Underrepresented the property owner, Donald F. Gillespie, with us, sorry, tonight. Ocean Ave is a public way with, this property is listed in our three zoning district requiring a minimum of ten thousand square feet and one hundred feet of frontage. This board previously endorsed a plan creating a lot one that was ten thousand square feet. With the house layout that's been selected on lot one, we've decided to increase the size of that lot to twelve thousand square feet. This plan here depicts that new lot, lot one here being one hundred feet of frontage on Citrit Avenue, with a depth of a hundred and twenty feet for twelve thousand square feet. All upland land area. It leaves the remainder of the property with the existing house as lot two with a little over thirty-eight thousand square feet and a hundred and ninety-five feet of frontage on Ocean Ave.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the board?
You're not creating any problems with the lot being, in other words, it's fully compliant?
Yes, fully compliant lot.
I'm sorry, Karen? It has access and frontage, and you endorsed it before. They're just increasing the lot size.
Why, why does it have septic covers all over the place here?
Sure. There's, one of your requirements is that you locate the septic system that services the lot. House number forty-four is in the process of getting a new septic system, but that's where the current septic system lies right now. It's common ownership between the two lots, and that septic system that you see will be abandoned prior to any conveyance to any new people.
Okay. Anything else? All right, Patty, you're on.
One of my favorite houses, and I'll mind it.
Yeah, it's a nice house.
It's a beautiful house.
You're not gonna keep it, though, are you?
You're not gonna keep the garden?
No.
The gardens with, that lot is the new lot.
Yeah, it's too bad.
Oh, well. Okay. A motion?
I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land in the town of Citrit, Mass., Forty-four Ocean Ave, prepared by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated for applicant owner Donald F. Joan M. Gillespie, dated ten seventeen eighteen. As the division of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows every lot on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required under the Citrit zoning bylaw on the public way of Ocean Ave.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving rapidly along, we have minutes.
I move to approve the minutes, minute meetings for October eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Accounting.
I move to approve the requisition of two thousand three hundred twenty dollars to Merrill Corporation for stormwater ranks revision and working session, for two thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents to Horsley Witten for seaside at Citrit site inspections, for fourteen dollars and eight cents to W.B. Mason for auto supplies, for three hundred dollars to Chesia Consulting LLC for site inspections at Fifty Country Way, for seventy-seven dollars to Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, for four thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-two cents to Toll Brothers Inc. for refund of unexpected, unexpended funds from planning board guarantee account for design work peer reviews.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have vacancy on design review. Mr. Ronan has submitted his resignation.
He's, he's just, he's submitted that he doesn't want to be reappointed.
Reappointed, so...
When's his term through?
Uh, November twelfth.
November twelfth, so...
So, just to let you know, it would be nice to have somebody who's an architect.
Or urban designer, some, that type of minds.
So if anybody knows anybody who knows anybody, reach out, and hopefully someone...
I know somebody who might be interested, so...
I will ask him.
All right, you ask him. Okay. Liaison reports.
As far as I know, the Haring Brook Metaphor EBS passed. They got approval, so that's gonna be going forward, the new iteration of it. Other than that, there's, all's been pretty quiet on the liaison reporting.
CPC is, is accepting applications for the spring town meeting, historical, mostly historical, and then, not too much. EDC, I was unable to attend. Anybody else, Bill? Planning and development report.
We are working on stormwater regulations and hope to have another meeting with the working group to kind of wind things up in the near future. Seaside at Cituit is, they've selected a site contractor, so work should be starting to, starting to progress in the next few weeks.
And is that going to be the remediation?
They're gonna be, they're gonna be doing remediation, yes.
Has it been filed at the DEP?
Yes, the Ram, the Ram Plan was filed with DEP.
Okay.
And they've been doing...
Was there any feedback from DEP on that, that we know of?
It was just filed on the twelfth of this month.
The twelfth, okay.
So they've been doing pre-characterization, and they've, the monitoring wells found everything that they thought, I mean, they didn't find anything, and so they're still selecting their contractor for that, and it will, remediation will be going on in, I would imagine, the next month or so. But they're still fine tuning all their stuff.
Is that gonna be the first thing they do, or are they doing that in parallel? Trying to remember how we had that laid out. Were they doing land clearing? Or is that gonna come after the remediation?
That's, they've been doing some, that should come after the remediation.
Okay.
I mean, they've declared some of the stuff on the, on the westerly side of Hadley Road, and that's where they're having their sales office. They've got a trailer out there. They've put the construction entrance in. They've been doing some, you know, demolition.
The sales office on the east side of Hadley Road, is it?
Yes, right, yes, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
It appears that it is rather popular because there, I understand that the first phase is all but sold, and that eight of the ten houses...
Sold?
That is what I...
Did the double door units go for premium?
They're working on their master set of elevations.
And I also heard that if you buy a unit that's on the water side, that there was a premium for that?
On the water side?
In other words, on the Hadley Road overlooking the water.
Oh, if you had that first row.
Right, but the thing is...
I would expect that.
Yeah, but with the houses there, how could you see anything?
I would still expect you're gonna be up a little higher.
They're gonna bring in ten thousand dump trucks and raise it off.
Right, yes, and that, but this...
I mean, we saw the elevation, right?
There's gonna be some elevation.
And then, there is a premium for the people on the next row over, overlooking all of the open space. And I, you know, I know people that are going in there, so everybody seems to be...
Good for them.
Good for them. All right, planning board signatures?
We have to refile the signatures with the registry of deeds now because now we have a new alternate member.
Well, okay.
So that's, we'll have those sheets for you to sign tonight, and we'll submit them to the registry.
Bill and I are interviewing the top two candidates tomorrow, tomorrow, right? Tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Eleven and one.
Eleven and one for the master plan consultant.
Great, okay. Is there anything else that anybody wants to discuss? All right, I'll entertain Bill's motion.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.